We're out tonight, we're welcoming you to the meeting, we'll go ahead and call it to order and do roll call vote.
Allers.
Present.
Deacon.
Here.
Hensley.
Present.
Lester.
Here.
Neely.
Here.
Schwartz. Spencer.
Here.
Spicer.
Present.
Weisman.
Present.
Wright.
Present.
And Horns.
All right, first, item number three, adoption of the agenda.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Next items are following miscellaneous items, the Kevin Minehart Award, Ms. Strope, and we have our recipient in the room.
We do. Not only do we have our recipient, first I would like to introduce to you Bob Minehart. Bob is the brother of the late Kevin Minehart, who this award was named after or created after. Do we have a presentation, PowerPoint? I'll go ahead and get started, so. So I am very pleased to be able to be here this evening to present to you the Kevin Minehart Memorial Award for Distinguished Public Service for 2023. So Kevin Minehart was a citizen of Jefferson City who was very involved in the community and served on the Jefferson City's Board of Adjustment from 1997 to 2012. So during his time, he demonstrated his commitment to public service and continually represented the highest standards in ethics and professionalism. Because of this, the employees of the city of Jefferson City, the mayor, and members of the council wanted to honor him and express their gratitude for the example that he set, so the Kevin Minehart Memorial Award for Distinguished Public Service was created. This award nominations can be submitted by any member serving on any city board, committee, or commission, including any staff liaison or any city council member. So the candidate selected displays public service devotion, excellence in professionalism, outstanding enthusiasm, and reflects the highest ideals of citizenship in their conduct. So I'm very pleased this evening to introduce to you Frank Rysik, who is our recipient of this year's Kevin Minehart Award. So I want to tell you a little bit about Frank, and many of you know Frank because we often see him here at the council meetings. Frank has been on the Traffic and Transportation Commission, he's currently on the Human Relations Commission where I get to work with Frank on a regular basis, and he's the current chair for the Airport Advisory Committee. He's also an active member of the Evening Rotary, the Jefferson City Area Chamber of Commerce, the Towntown Business Association, he's a very active member in his church, the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship, and he has donated in the past to the Missouri State Archives, and he has a whole list of other things he's been involved in in the past, too. And I'd like to read a few of the words that were listed on his nomination form. Frank is very well thought out, he takes a studied and detailed look at each project brought before him, he listens to reason and also counters with his take on the subject. Mr. Rysik has shown his love for the city of Jefferson through his letters to the editor in our local newspaper. He truly wants what's best for Jefferson City, he points out how we can always improve, and never a negative remark have I heard. And I believe his willingness to engage dialogue and offer his opinion and listen to others' thought process, and then having an engaging discussion on the topic is what I admire most in him. It's never personal, it's always civil. So it's for all of these reasons and many more that Mr. Rysik has been nominated for this award and is very deserving, and so I'm pleased to introduce him as our awardee for the Kevin Minehart Award for Distinguished Public Service for 2023.
Certainly welcome you to the microphone, I know you're a man of few words, but make it available for you.
I am thankful for everybody involved in this nomination, Mayor Fitzwater, Councilman Allers, Gail Strope, and people whose name I forgot. I'm thankful to be living in Jeff City, it's a good town, I hope I can make it a little bit better, and I hope I prove to be deserving of this award. Thank you.
Would you like to make any comments on behalf of the?
No, I just appreciate the city for continuing to honor Kevin. We as the family appreciate that. Congratulations, Frank.
Thank you.
We don't do a lot of pictures, but if you two want to come up here, we'll kind of line up behind you, I don't know, catch up guard, you have your phone?
I have a graphic.
Council wants to play, we can do a quick photo, get back on our way.
Just because it's Frank.
Stand next to me.
Okay, one, two, three. Okay, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs.
I mean, I don't give a guy, I'm not getting low.
Very well deserved, thank you for all your work on behalf of the city, it is much appreciated. Councilman Allers, thanks for moving that name forward. That takes us to item five, public hearings, pending bill 2023-062.
In ordinance to the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending chapter 35, the zoning code pertaining to specific use standards for drive-through and mini-storage uses.
Mr. Smith, staff report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, so what we have tonight is two, one bill, but two separate changes to our zoning text that apply to two different uses. One would be drive-through lanes and one is many-storage uses. So these have two specific uses within the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance does include standards for specific uses, and these tax amendments kind of address those standards. So the first one, drive-through lanes, and it has two specific provisions to the tax amendments that we're proposing tonight. One of those is that for drive-through lanes, basically there is a required setback for drive-through lanes. Right now, that is 20 feet, so from the edge of that lane to the edge of the property, it must be set back 20 feet. Just go through a little history with drive-throughs, before, maybe in the last 10, 20 years, drive-throughs typically would be developed, kind of ringing around a major building, parking on the outside, so those drive-through lanes were usually buffered by the parking spaces on the outside. We've had a little bit of, I think, growth in the drive-through industry, especially in the restaurant business, where we see a little bit different model. Those drive-through lanes are now pushed a little more to the edge, if you think of some of the new restaurants we have, they kind of separate them from the pedestrian area so that people parking aren't actually often having to cross through those parking or through those drive lanes for safety reasons and for convenience to customers. With moving those to the edge of the property, though, now it doesn't have that buffer, and so we have seen a few instances where we're winding up and developers winding up with basically 20 feet of space between the edge of that drive-through lane and the edge of the property. In some cases, this can be desirable, but in a lot of cases, specifically, we've had a number of variances over the last few years to this specific provision. So staff did want to take a look at this and evaluate that to see if this is still kind of meeting the goals and objectives of what that provision was initially put into, or put into the zoning code for. So evaluating that and taking it to plan zoning, a couple times for review, staff's recommendation was to reduce that setback from 20 to 5 feet. Essentially, that, the 20 feet pushed them back from adjacent commercial properties as well, so they didn't see quite to be an initial or a really compelling reason to have a setback from another commercial property when it could be on the other side having parking spaces or a drive aisle within 5 feet of that property. So we really wanted to mimic that setback for drive-through lanes, similar to what a drive lane in a normal parking lot would be. So we're reducing that, or the recommendation is reduce that setback from 20 feet to 5 feet. The other provision is that there is a required turning radius for drive-through lanes, so if you think of driving radius, it's basically how wide a curve is, so when you're going through a drive-through, there's a minimum radius of that curve that is required to be there, and that provision for 20 feet is actually a fairly significant provision. And when we go up in that size, it really increases the space necessary to accommodate that curve, so thereby also driving up to space in which it's required for a property to accommodate that widened turning radius. So we looked through the code, there's really not any other provisions that require a turning radius for any other uses. We still wanted to allow a minimum there, so we're proposing to reduce that from 20 to 10. Really what that does is require motorists to actually take that corner slower as you go up in the size of turning radius, that actually allows them to drive quicker. So this kind of actually decreases speed on a site, but also kind of decreases the space necessary to accommodate drive-through uses. So those are the two provisions we're recommending for a drive-through lanes, associated a lot of times with restaurants. The other provision here is addressing mini-storage uses or self-storage uses, we actually have four different provisions for those. The fences, or excuse me, the first is the removal of a requirement that a solid screening fence be required for all mini-storage uses. So a couple things to note about that, mini-storage uses are allowed as of right in industrial district. When they are in a commercial district, they're actually a conditional use. So staff actually is proposing to include some language with the conditional portion that the Board of Adjustment should review, excuse me, the planning and zoning, no, sorry, Board of Adjustment would have the opportunity to evaluate a site to see if in that situation a fence was actually appropriate. So what it does is take away a blanket requirement for all mini-storage uses to have a solid screening fence, and in the cases where it's in a commercial district, would allow the Board of Adjustment to evaluate it more on a case-by-case basis. In an industrial district, we didn't see quite the need there to have that also as a blanket statement or a blanket requirement for all mini-storage uses in industrial districts, given that most of them aren't necessarily close proximity of residential uses. But in addition to that requirement, zoning and screening requirements would still pertain when you have an industrial site next to residential districts, so there still likely would be a fence or a screening requirement in those situations. So we feel that kind of covers, I think, most of the scenarios in which you would want a fence or want the Board of Adjustment to evaluate a fence in certain situations. The second one is reducing the aisle width between store rooms. Right now, it is 30 feet, which is actually wider than a drive aisle in a parking lot. So a parking lot drive aisle minimum is 24 feet. 30 feet is a significant distance, and similar to drive-through uses, we've had a number of variances to that width, given its significant increase over what a minimum size for a drive aisle would be. Recommendation here is to, in fact, reduce it to the 24 feet, which would be consistent with a drive aisle within a parking lot. Many of these, mini-storage uses are very, very low-traffic areas, it's not something where you see usually a stacking of cars or a lot of visitations at any one time, so there's very little reason to believe that there's going to be traffic issues in there, so we do believe the 24-feet width of those drive aisles should be enough to accommodate basically a parking in front of your space with enough space for another vehicle to travel by. And again, this really reduces the footprint needed for these uses, kind of maximizing space and making it a little more efficient. The third one is removing a parking requirement for mini-storage uses. This kind of goes back to when mini-storage uses a lot of times would have onsite office parking, and it was included to make sure there was at least parking requirements for any individuals working in that office or perhaps stopping to talk with someone in that office space. Many of those don't have that today, and furthermore, most of these sites normally are paid. A lot of parking spaces are procreating opportunities within the site, really without needing to make a requirement for parking spaces to be located at any location within a mini-storage site. So our recommendation is remove that parking, there still could be parking provided by a user or a developer of that site if they felt it was necessary, given their specific business model, or remove that kind of obstacle where there's a minimum imposed by the city, so it allows them to kind of evaluate that on a case-by-case basis themselves. The last provision is the removal of a limit on the number of street accesses any one business could have in a location. So they're limited right now to one access point per street frontage, there are no other uses we have in the zoning ordinance that limit access, couldn't come up with a specific, I think, rationale for limiting this type of business to that, to just one per street frontage. Most of them don't have more than those one access points. Again, it is kind of a low-traffic use, we don't see a lot of demand for multiple access points, so we didn't feel it was appropriate or necessary then to limit access points, where in certain situations it actually could be appropriate. So those are the four specific standards that we're recommending revision to for mini-storage uses. So between that and the drive-through lanes, there's six provisions there, and many of these are focused on kind of reducing some of those hurdles that developers have faced and, in fact, have come to the city asking for relief through the variance process. So in the normal scope of things and work that our planning staff does, they do note variances, and when we start to see that repetition, we start evaluating them to see if, in fact, these provisions are still kind of meeting the objectives again of what they were originally intended to. And the six, we didn't feel like they were necessarily furthering, I think, the goals of the city, so that is why it was evaluated by staff and why we're recommending these six be approved tonight. Happy to answer any questions, and I would say it was reviewed by planning zoning and all of these were approved eight to nothing by planning zoning.
All right, we don't see any questions, so we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Was there anyone here to speak on behalf of those disposals? Anybody here to speak in opposition? All right, we will close the public hearing then, and you have 2023-062 in front of you, we will need a roll call vote. You have questions, sir? You good?
No.
All right, we'll have a roll call vote.
Allers.
Yes.
Deacon.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Neely.
Aye.
Schwartz. Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Weisman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Bill Patsis.
All right, that takes us to 2023-063.
In ordinance to the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending chapter 36, the zoning code pertaining to marijuana land uses.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so we do have, we have another zoning code text amendment. This one's a little more straightforward, amendment three was passed earlier this year that legalized recreational marijuana, and it actually allowed the cities to then amend their zoning ordinance, and that's what we're proposing tonight. So we're removing the distinction between medical marijuana and marijuana in general, so the zoning code then would basically strike any reference to medical zoning ordinance, and it would just refer to marijuana facilities, is not changing the permitted use allowances for any of the different types of medical, or excuse me, marijuana facilities we have, so dispensaries for medical marijuana facilities are allowed in the exact same locations and zoning districts as marijuana facilities. No change in there, really just striking the word "medical," and we did revise a little bit of reference language to the state of Missouri, just to make it a little more generalized, but essentially, we're bringing it into compliance with state law at this point, so I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on 2023-063. Is anybody here to speak in favor of that bill? Anybody in opposition? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, you have 2023-063 in front of you for a roll call vote.
Deacon.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Neely.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Weisman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Bill Patsis.
All right, that takes us to 2023-066 and 2023-067, we're going to do the staff report together, and then we will do separate public hearings on those.
2023-066, an ordinance reaffirming a certain tract of land in the city of Jefferson, Missouri, is a blighted area approving the amended and restated development plan, Simons and Redevelopment Project, affirming a development agreement in connection with the amended and restated development plan, and authorizing the city to enter into certain agreements and take certain other actions in connection therewith.
Do you hear the next one?
Aye.
Or do it something?
Why don't you, why don't you hold off? All right, we'll do a staff report.
Yeah, so, thank you, so, bill number 066 amends the development plan for the Simons and Project. So originally, the city council approved chapter 353 tax abatement for restoration of the Simons and Building, and the terms of the chapter 353 tax abatement were 25 years at 100%. If the city council recalls, that project involved a 100% residential project. The original developer of that project was not able to complete the project and ended up selling the property to Dagan's Consortium LLC, and so Dagan's Consortium LLC still wants to restore the Simons and property, but has a slightly different take on that project. And so because the original project was 100% residential project, and the desired development of the current owner is a mixed-use property, the city council has to essentially modify the development plan to allow for this mixed-use type development as opposed to just residential. So that is what 066 does, it amends the development plan for the purposes of the chapter 353 tax incentives. So if this bill is passed by the city council, the property owner will be able to take advantage of the same term of abatement that was made available to the original development, 100% tax abatement for 25 years. I see that we have representatives from the developer here tonight, and also joining us tonight is Marcus Spikerman with Gilmore Bell, who drew up the documents both for this bill and the next bill, so I would say any project questions would probably be appropriate to Mr. Drury, and if any specifics on the details of the documents could be directed to Mr. Spikerman, so that is 66 on the 353.
Do you want to do the public hearing on that, or do you want to?
I'd say open, yeah, open up the public hearing on that.
Okay, we'll go ahead and do the public hearing then on 2023-066. Applicant, any comments that you want to make to council? If you just identify yourself, welcome, thanks for being here.
Hi, I'm DJ Drury, just here to answer any questions of, or whether we are pro this decision, so speaking last time, if there's anything else I can answer for, I'm happy to oblige.
Any questions? I think you got them on the last time.
All right, thank you.
All right, anybody in opposition to 2023-066? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, you have that bill in front of you for a roll call vote.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Neely.
Aye.
Schwartz. Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Weisman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Deacon.
Aye.
All right, now we'll go to 2023-067.
An ordinance repealing ordinance number 16250, an authorization to the Jefferson, Missouri, to issue its taxable industrial revenue bonds, series 2023, in a principal amount not to exceed $15 million, for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of acquiring, constructing, and improving a facility for industrial development project in the city, approving plan for the project, and authorizing the city to enter into certain agreements and take certain other actions in connection therewith.
Thank you, so, same story, but this is for the city's chapter 100, sales tax exemption,
so chapter 100 allows for developers to take advantage of sales tax exemption to assist with the purchase of materials in the restoration of the project in this historic building. So same story, there was a development plan that was approved for the chapter 100 incentive that needs to be amended because it comes from a residential use. And details on the specifics of the machinery of that can be referenced to Mr. Spikerman, but this would allow for an extension of the same tax incentive under chapter 100, previously approved aside, but I haven't said to be approved for the current developer as well.
All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on 2023-067. Applicant, any other comments?
Here if you need me.
You don't see any ants raising, so. All right, anybody in opposition? All right, you have 2023-067 in front of you for a roll call vote.
Lester.
Aye.
Neely.
Aye.
Schwartz. Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Weisman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Deacon.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Neely.
Aye.
Schwartz. Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Weisman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Deacon.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Bill Patsis.
Thank you, and thank you again for your investment in our community, it's worth watching it continue to blossom on the hillside there, thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, appointments by the mayor, item 6A, reappointment to the Hartland Port Authority, but we will need a motion to approve the appointment.
Motion to approve.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, thanks for serving.
Thank you very much.
You guys have a meeting tomorrow.
That's what we do.
All right, item B, our board and commission appointments, you see them before you, we'll also need a motion for that, for those appointments.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're not hearing any in opposition, so the ones that are with an asterisk, we will assume they got the required votes. Presentations from staff consultants, what I guess, I don't think we have any, announcements by the mayor, admin committee, anything we need to know about?
Our next scheduled meeting is on January 3rd at 7:30 a.m., if we have it.
All right, finance?
We will be having our monthly meeting this Thursday morning, the 21st at 7:30 a.m. across the hall.
All right, public safety?
Meeting is January 26th at 7:30. Our police trainer.
And public works?
We will be meeting Thursday, January 11th, 7:30 here in the office chambers.
Any other announcements? Out of nine presentations from the gallery on specific bills or resolutions, we don't have anything, consent agenda, two items, need a motion on the consent agenda, move. Motion is second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, bills introduced, item 11A, 2023-068, Mr. Smith.
An ordinance to the city of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing blanket sanitary sewer easements over parts of Outlet 77 and Outlet 29.
Didn't mean to startle you there, Mr. Smith, kind of jumped the gun.
Mr. Smith, either, either of which, Mr. Smith, yes, this bill would vacate various sanitary sewer easements which are not being used on the properties listed within the bill. The property is currently owned by Upper Region Medical Center, and we're doing this as basically a cleanup of the property for future use and development. And be happy to answer any questions, and the owners have requested expedited process and it's a reason for the check.
Questions? Councilman Spencer?
I request that we suspend the rules for bill 06A.
Then no opposition, we'll reboot.
An ordinance to the city of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing blanket sanitary sewer easements over parts of Outlet 77 and Outlet 29.
Roll call vote, please.
Neely.
Aye.
Schwartz. Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Weisman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Deacon.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Bill Patsis.
All right, 2023-069.
An ordinance to the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the 2022-2023 budget of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, by supplementally appropriating additional funds within the general fund.
Yeah, so this one's going to require some further work at a staff level, so staff is requesting that the sponsor withdraw this from the, from the, from the agenda.
Councilman Heskey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I would like to withdraw this bill from the agenda.
All right, we want 2023-070.
An ordinance to the city of Jefferson, Missouri, correcting references to chapter 32 of the city code contained within Appendix Y and amending chapter 32, section 222 of the city code to include a reference to Appendix Y.
Mr. Smith.
Yes, as Clark mentioned, this bill essentially is a cleanup. Recently, chapter 32 went through fairly major revisions, which did change section numbers.
section numbers, and unfortunately, appendix Y was not updated at the same time. This bill would correct that and ensure that the code has the appropriate references within the amended section and also in chapter thirty-two to appendix Y. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right, seeing none, go to twenty twenty-three dash zero seven.
An ordinance approving a plan for an industrial development project for Unilever Manufacturing Incorporated, authorizing the City of Jefferson, Missouri to issue its taxable industrial development revenue bonds, Unilever real property project, series two, twenty twenty-four, in a principal amount not to exceed thirteen million dollars, and its taxable industrial development revenue bonds, Unilever personal property project, series twenty twenty-four, in a principal amount not to exceed fourteen million dollars to finance the cost of such project, authorizing and approving certain documents and authorizing certain other actions in connection with issuance of the bonds.
Mr. Moore?
Thank you. So this bill would issue taxable industrial development revenue bonds for a project at the Unilever site, which is a warehouse project. City council previously approved an inducement resolution for that project, and a result of that are these, is this bill tonight. So essentially, the project consists of a new forty-six thousand square foot warehouse on the existing site. All council, Gilmore Bell, as prepared, provided an extensive summary, which is attached to the bill's summary, but the highlights include the incentive is fifty percent tax abatement on real property taxes for thirteen million dollars of real property improvements, and fifty percent tax abatement on personal property tax purchases of approximately fourteen million dollars in personal property. Performance agreement requires that the company maintain at least four hundred and forty-one jobs on the site in exchange for these tax incentives. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. I believe we may have a representative from the company here, and also Mr. Holt Schneider from J.C. Rep. should be able to answer questions as well.
All right, questions from counsel? Any comments you'd like to make?
I think there are any questions in place, but just excited.
Thanks for being here. All right, takes us to bills pending, twenty twenty-three dash zero five eight.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for transportation alternative program funds.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, as clerk mentioned, this bill would authorize a grant agreement with MODOT, using funds commonly called TAP funds, but it's transportation alternative funds program through MODOT for the construction of a side path along South Country Club Drive, along a street that was rebuilt some years ago. But be happy to answer any questions.
Seeing none.
No comment?
Roll call vote?
Schwartz. Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Weisman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Deacon.
Aye.
Hensley. Lester.
Aye.
Neely.
Aye.
Will pass us.
All right, twenty twenty-three dash zero five nine.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing utilization of the HTAC Cooperative Purchasing Program and lease purchase financing through Bank of America Public Capital Court for purchase of a Rosenbauer fire apparatus from Sentinel Emergency Solutions. In addition, authorizing a contract with Sentinel Emergency Solutions for use of a loaner apparatus until the Rosenbauer ladder truck is received.
Let's go, Phil.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate the opportunity to bring this recommendation forward. Reason we're here is because the truck was damaged in an incident on September the twentieth, and ultimately, we formed a committee to evaluate different options and make a recommendation. Want to take a minute to recognize the folks that were part of that committee. It's Captain Brad Van Lou, driver Anthony Chapani, Captain Kelly Ford, Division Chief Jason Turner, and myself. So we looked at all our various options. We are bringing forth this proposal and ultimately are seeking approval to replace the truck that was deemed total from that incident, utilizing the company that the original truck was from, which was manufacturer Rosenbauer and our dealer representative Sentinel Fire Apparatus out of San Diego area. So as part of this process, we originally, as the original bill stated, sought to have a loaner apparatus as part of the solution. Since that time, we've come to the realization that the amount of liability for us to operate a loaner apparatus for the time before the truck was delivered potentially put the city at a disadvantage from the liability for repair. So we are not recommending that. That was something we spent a little bit of time talking about. So that is one change that we are making to the original recommendation. And then since that time, too, we were directed to explore options, which would be a cash purchase op, use the cash purchase option versus financing. We'd originally gone out with an RFP to secure financing for the remaining amount that was not covered, and the amount that was reimbursed to us by our insurance carrier, and then the amount that was paid off from the truck. Under five years of a ten-year loan, we paid off as part of that collateral. So all that to say this, there's been a lot of discussion, certainly happy to answer any questions. I know that there's a lot of moving parts to this, but maybe the best thing for me to do would be to ask if there's any questions of me that I can fill in any gaps. I know as well, a lot of assistance from law and legal, a lot of assistance from finance and the city administrator throughout this process.
Any questions?
Thank you. I think we talked about this in committee, but just to clarify for the full counsel, the being withdrawn or, you know, that's the best word, but to pay for this, if we are to recover any, recover any funds or any sort of process, so as long as we go back to where they were full.
That was the intent that was discussed, would be standard practice.
That would be the standard practice. If we had some kind of supplemental, any funds we receive would be returned to where we withdrew them from.
And maybe it's also important to note, and it's maybe described or displayed in the exhibit within the original as well as the substitute, but, you know, the funds that are being utilized are funds, some funds that were pre-allocated for fleet replacement, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from a couple of budget cycles ago. So those funds are being utilized, as well as the funds that were already committed towards the payments, the five years of the payments that remained on this truck. So I should take that back. The amount of those payments that were part of our sales, current sales tax. So we're not taking funds that are not already accounted for in a future sales tax cycle, but in our current sales tax cycle. So because we're paying off the apparatus that we are required to because it was collateral that was used to secure the loan, those funds are also recognized and reapplied to this purchase. I don't know if there's a better way to describe that, I hope that makes sense.
And just to clarify, so while replacement of the sales tax money would be the practice of what we would do, ultimately, that would not be required under the state statute. I don't think that essentially a settlement or a judgment award would be subject to the constraints of the capital of the sales tax statute. So that's the way it would essentially come in, but if the city council wanted, needed to do something else with that money, I don't think that the statute would require that. So it's more about internal policy and, you know, ultimately, the council, but that's the way the process had to start.
Yep, got it.
Counselor Spencer?
Just a quick question. This is a very unfortunate incident, an incident that was out of our, out of your personnel's control. I think that needs to be reiterated to the public as well, that was no fault of our own. But second, you know, this really puts a burden on, on what I call the reserve apparatus, because now what that truck might have been pushed into reserve status, now that our reserve status is already ten-plus years old. So how we're going to, you know, maneuver that to extend the life of a reserve fleet, you know, reserve ladder, is really going to take some, take some shuffling.
If I could, I should probably also give a shout out, thanks to our central maintenance staff. There have been at least four occasions that I'm aware of in the time that this, since the time of this incident, where we've been called in for overtime to fix a truck that's down because we are literally down with no reserve. So we have asked them to expedite those repairs, and they've done everything they can to do that. So it does put us into a very tight, at the same time, we feel like the savings, as well as the limiting of the liability for repairs, is a key piece. And it's also probably important to recognize that part of the reason we're making this recommendation now for a number of reasons, we're trying to beat the price increase of January first, but we're really trying to utilize a truck that was already in the production timeline or their queue, their pipeline. By doing so, what would have been a three-year process for any new apparatus has been reduced to six months. And so that is a critical component of this discussion because we know how vulnerable we are without this truck in service. So that is a major consideration, and it's been a focus from the very beginning. Make sure we keep the fleet healthy and that we have the equipment and tools we need to do our job and meet the community's expectations.
Motion, substitute. Moving substitute twenty twenty-three dash zero five nine.
Yes, second.
Got a motion is second on the substitute that is to lay it on the table for a roll call vote.
Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Weisman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Deacon.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Neely.
Aye.
Schwartz. Substitute is accepted.
All right, you now have substitute twenty twenty-three zero five nine before you. Seeing no other questions, roll call vote.
Spicer.
Aye.
Weisman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Deacon.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Neely.
Aye.
Schwartz. Spencer.
Aye.
Will pass us.
All right, twenty twenty-three dash zero six zero.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing utilization of an HTAC Cooperative Agreement for purchase of a Rosenbauer fire crash truck from Sentinel Emergency Solutions Safety.
Let's go, Phil.
Yes, thank you. This would be, I guess we consider this to be a companion to the fifty-nine, although a different piece of apparatus that's been in discussion for many years. We were fortunate enough to receive support from the state in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars to go towards this truck. The remainder of the ninety-two thousand was also utilized from FY twenty-four budget. Just like before, I want to recognize the folks that were part of this process who helped with the specification, spending a lot of time trying to make sure we got it right, got as close as we could to what we needed for the airport, and that was Captain Brian Levan, driver Colin Wright, and firefighter Justin Bryan, Division Chief Jason Turner. So the truck itself essentially replaces what is there now, which is a thirty-three-year-old truck, and it's a little bit longer timeline because it will be custom-built for our application. So we're looking at at least two years for this truck. We did receive discounts, substantial discounts by doing a multi-truck purchase for this aircraft rescue firefighting truck. Same manufacturer, utilizing the same.
Seeing no questions, you have twenty twenty-three dash zero six zero in front of you for a roll call vote.
Weisman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Deacon.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Neely.
Aye.
Schwartz. Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Will pass us.
Twenty twenty-three dash zero six one.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a land purchase agreement with a grant agreement between the City of Jefferson and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to purchase property for a new airport control tower for the Jefferson City Memorial Airport.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, as clerk mentioned, this is a bill that would authorize a land purchase and a grant agreement. Should also note that the grant agreement is a one hundred percent grant, there is no local match required. The land would be used for the construction of a new airport control tower at our airport, and would be happy to answer any questions. Also should note that after talking with the seller, they had a couple of minor revisions to the sale agreement, and so we've offered a substitute for the consideration with those concessions to the seller.
Substitute is accepted.
All right, you have substitute twenty twenty-three dash zero six one before you. Seeing no further questions, let's do a roll call vote.
Allers.
Aye.
Deacon.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Neely.
Aye.
Schwartz. Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Weisman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Will pass us.
All right, twenty twenty-three dash zero six two and twenty twenty-three dash zero six three were taken up under public hearing. That takes us to twenty twenty-three dash zero six four.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri accepting and approving the final subdivision plat of Edwards Bridge subdivision, a subdivision of the City of Jefferson, Missouri.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we do have a bill for approval of a final subdivision plat referred to as Edwards Bridge. Location, approximately twenty-two and a half acres, it will create twenty-six new single-family lots, including a reserve tract for stormwater facilities. Will be a new street dedicated, constructed along with this subdivision, Bobby Court. The lots in, within the subdivision are ranging in size from seventeen thousand to approximately sixty-four thousand square feet. For those lots, the location this is on the east side of Route CC, so we'll have, a few of those lots will be fronting on that. There is a, also an amendment within the ordinance to Schedule J, which would relegate parking within the new street for Bobby Court to the south side of the street. And with that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Deacon.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Neely.
Aye.
Schwartz. Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Weisman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Will pass us.
Twenty twenty-three dash zero six five.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri amending chapter nineteen Motor Vehicles and Traffic Schedule B and peaceful parking spaces by the addition of a space of Washington Street.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, as, as mentioned, this bill would add an accessible space on Washington Street in the vicinity of Central Church. The bill, or excuse me, the request was, came through the Transportation and Traffic Commission, and that body recommended approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Seeing no questions, we'll do a roll call vote.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Neely.
Aye.
Schwartz. Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Weisman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Allers.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, twenty twenty-three dash zero six six, twenty twenty-three dash zero six seven, we're taking care of the bottom. Nothing uninformal, takes us to item fourteen, Resolutions, item eight, twenty twenty-three dash three eight.
Resolution of official intent of the city council of Jefferson City, Missouri for the issuance of one or more series of taxable industrial development revenue bonds, finance Project Maverick and Project Box, and authorizing certain actions relating thereto.
Mr. Moore?
Thank you. So this resolution of intent authorizes staff, bond counsel, and members of J.C. Rep. to explore the issuance of taxable industrial revenue bonds for two projects with an existing industrial landowner here in Jefferson City. First project is approximately eighty-three million dollars potentially, Project Maverick consisting of both real and personal property tax abatement. Second project is potential twenty-one million dollar investment, also consisting of real and personal property improvements and purchases. Second project is potential twenty-one million dollar investment, um, also consisting of, uh, real and personal property, uh, improvements and, uh, purchases. Mr. Holt Schneider from J C Rep is here, he can address any project-specific, uh, questions, um, council, council may, uh, have, uh, but, uh, essentially, it's utilizing the city's, uh, power signature, chapter one, providing tax, uh, tax extensions, ensure all project to an existing, uh, existing company here in Jefferson City.
Questions? Mr. Miller.
Thank you. Do we typically state the company?
Um, so i- it, it kind of depends, uh, this one, the, the more typical approach is to have the company, but this one is still subject to some confidentiality, uh, from the, uh, from the, from the potential applicant. And so, in this case, uh, we're still proceeding without the company, uh, informational on the company, on a, on a public basis. Do it both ways, I've seen it done both ways. We have typically had that information available at this time.
Okay, what's the confidentiality?
The company does not have the ability to be leased, uh, be tied to the projects quite yet. This is at, this is at the request of, of the entity.
Congressman Spencer.
Yeah, that, that's what I wanted to get out, is that, is, this is at the request of, of the company, so, yeah, let's, I'll try to honor that.
Congressman Heslin.
Thank you, Ryan, um, would this resolution approve the issuance of any bonds or any other?
It, it does not, so, so there will have to be, um, in the future, uh, a, uh, separate ordinances to approve the issuance of the, uh, the revenue bonds, taxable industrial revenue bonds, and the, uh, and the tax incentives that go with that. And at that time, you, they, you know, if we get there, uh, the, the, the company will be made public at that time.
So this is, uh, sort of approving the next step of continuing.
This essentially allows staff, J C Rep, bond council, to spend the necessary time and resources to explore this, work out a deal, and see if this is something that can be brought to Jefferson City.
Question one.
I was just gonna move.
Second.
All right, we have, we have twenty twenty-three dash three eight in front of you for a roll call vote.
Hallers. Yes. Deacon.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Schwartz. Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Weisman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
It's approved.
Motion passes, resolution twenty twenty-three dash three nine.
Resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to approve a second amendment to PCS site agreement.
Mr. Mollman.
Thank you, so this, uh, resolution would authorize a, uh, an amendment, an extension to a cell tower land lease at, uh, Fire Station Four. Um, so essentially, what this does is it extends the, uh, extends the lease of, uh, a small portion of Fire Station Four for cell tower purposes for an additional five-year, uh, term, with the availability of nine additional five-year terms, so kicking this out for additional five years. It increases the base rent on this, uh, to nineteen thousand, uh, three hundred and five, that's a, a small increase. Um, but also increases the, uh, the increase between terms to seventeen percent, and, uh, probably most, uh, strikingly increases the revenue share, which is the amount that the city is able to receive as a result of tenants on the site, or new tenants on the site. Uh, the revenue share for the city is increasing from thirty to thirty-five percent. Uh, also, this requires, uh, the, uh, the tenant to provide at least forty-eight hours' notice, uh, to the fire department before, uh, you know, engaging in non-emergency work, so that way, the fire department and the tenant can coordinate kind of on an operational level, uh, make sure that, that they're not there when, uh, when the fire department is in need of kind of full use of the, uh, of the driveway and accesses. And then also, uh, the tenant is going to pour a seven hundred and fifteen, uh, square foot concrete pad for their use when they are on-site, so they are kind of staying out of the operational areas of, of the fire station. So, uh, I would be happy to answer any questions on this.
Congressman Spencer.
Is it the same currently, uh?
It is, it's, it's the same current.
Station three?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, hold on. This is for Station Four.
Right, but the old Station Three, what, we still have?
We still have, we still have at least, um, this tenant and the Station Three tenants are not the same.
Not the same, okay. Thank you for clarification.
Right, and also different from Station Four.
Thank you.
Okay, resolution in front of you.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to approve, resolution twenty twenty-three dash three nine, we roll call vote.
Hallers.
Aye.
Deacon.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Schwartz. Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Weisman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Motion approved, no one signed up for presentations. Item sixteen, council and staff discussion on presentation topics, new business, unfinished business.
Mayor, sorry, I did that.
But you, you told me that, I'm sorry, if those, Congressman Spencer.
That's okay, I had some questions for, uh, Parks Commission President, Mr. Lico, but he's not here, I saw, I'll refer those to the next meeting. But I do have a question on potential, uh, rescheduling our February nineteenth meeting to Tuesday, February twenty. Council will possibly entertain that.
February nineteenth being present on stage. Comments, questions, is that in form of a motion?
Yes, it is, I'll check.
Yeah. We got a motion and a second before you to change the date from February nineteenth to February the twentieth. We need discussion, we roll call vote, please.
Hallers.
Yes.
Deacon.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Mealy.
Aye.
Schwartz. Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Weisman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, did you have anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Sorry. Unfinished business, that brings us down to item nineteen, we need to have the court's new statement, and we'll do a motion to adjourn and go forward.
The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the public session in pursuit of section six ten oh two one, other revised statutes of the jury. Going to close session to discuss the goal, attorney-client privilege, section six ten oh two one one, in preparation of bid specifications, section six ten oh two one one. Move to adjourn and go.
Second. We have a motion and a second, that's a roll call vote.
Hallers.
Aye.
Deacon.
Aye.
Aye.
Schwartz. Uh, Mealy.
Aye.
Schwartz. Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye. Aye.
Wright.